Thank you.
Thank you. They were.
All right. Well, the black and white. The black and white. Oh, yeah. One nation. There's a risk of all with electricity. Thank you.
Blaster. Nemo Chek.
Here.
I'm glad.
Here.
Moody.
Eric.
Maniam.
Eric.
Oram Reddick.
Thank you. I'm entertaining motion to excuse Commissioner Blaster and then work.
I'll make that motion.
Is it a second?
For.
All of them, they say I.
Aye.
And we vote.
Martin Gary.
Pardon me.
Martin Gary.
Yes. Next up is the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite expedite business by grouping non controversial items together. It be dealt with by one condition motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item or items on a consent agenda be moved in place with the last item in their new business to receive full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. So they on the consent agenda are to approve the January tenth twenty twenty three regular meeting minutes presented. Item B Parks and Rec member appointments. First with Parks and Recreation Commission recommendations to reappoint Peter Griffin and Diane Sterling with terms expiring December thirty first twenty twenty six. To appoint me and Jason Roth and Drake Weisman with terms expiring on December thirty first twenty twenty five. And to reappoint Michael Sheen with a term expiring on December thirty first twenty twenty four on Parks and Recreation. Item C points to the city Main Street Downtown Development Authority Board a world appointment approved in Point City Main Street Downtown Development Authority Board recommendation. To appoint Patty Gaden and Jessica White with terms expiring January twenty seventh. And to appoint Deanna Engelhardt with a term expiring on January twenty twenty four. Item D police vehicle outfitting approved Point City Police Department using Craig Bransford for the outfitting of the new patrol SUV and paid him a straight wage of three thousand dollars. Anything else? Is there a question? Any of them exactly? Commissioner?
I'll make a request here.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I just want to say that for the applicants for.
Danny, Danny, there'll be an appropriate time for that. Now was not that time.
Oh.
Commissioner Nemo Chek is going to make a motion here, so.
Okay.
There'll be an opportunity to do that.
I'll make a request to remove seat in this agenda of the mayor of the Congress.
Okay, we have a request from Commissioner Nemo Chek to move the Main Street appointments. A new business, I would appreciate it since we have several people who need to get back to work that we need that Main Street appointments under nine A. Make that nine A. It will come right after the Social District under both businesses. But there's a second, we're allowing the issue, and it's automatic if it was. Right? Any other arrangements about agenda? I wish I didn't. And a motion to remove that agenda moving in their Main Street appointments to nine A. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing item C. Your second. Thank you.
Nemo Chek.
Aye.
Carflin.
Aye.
Marty.
Aye.
Me, you, or Martin Gary.
Thank you.
Eric. Yes, I just like to point out for the worker that we now have a forum of the Main Street Board present. There's five members here. I think this was a gender burnt gallery gathering, but just to make sure that that's noted for the record.
And the end of it. And then the nine A, then it did the opportunity to like hear from you, so.
Oh, and nine A.
Yeah.
Okay.
Technically, it's not a forum, I don't believe, because. Patty hasn't been appointed. Well, she served until someone else has reappointed. They're kind of giving the technical. It's self all made.
Okay, there we have citizen comments on non agenda items better. There's one in the government director's commission on time to writing. Here's limited to five minutes and we have to be moving forward. Hey, for a great four one five High Street, just like to make a comment on last Friday's Marine reading. I don't know what the appropriate word is, but it was. I was very disillusioned with what happened. Commissioners did an awesome job of taking all the requests in Marina. The people that didn't want to line, people that did, to put together an awesome plan, come up with this layout. At Friday's meeting, it was discussed of doing the first phase or doing something that Marty really wanted done. Fix dot D, fix dot D, you know, normally. But then the motion was to. Build the new dot D as it is now and not towards future growth and future plans. And considering that you guys spent a year coming up with. And various recommendations from people that know what they're doing, and that was ignored. And I just wish to reevaluate the motion, make the motion to fix dot D, but do it in the plan that's going forward. Because I know what's going to happen. It gets built the way it is today, and it's never going to be torn out. It's never going to be fit, fit and new born then. So that's why I'm going to work together. Reevaluate construction of the dock, staying in the match, not the way it is today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to correspondence. We have something from the first press that period in current. They are no longer going to stay in annual week break time. By being senior in transit services report created by Citizen Chuck Volkowski. Is there anything else that's been something affecting the last day or two? Commissioner, any comments about the correspondence we received? No. Okay, moving on to city managers report, like.
A couple items. The park department's new equipment truck arrived last week, and the city commission had the opportunity to inspect it downstairs prior to the meeting. That truck has been on order for about two years, and it just arrived and took place in a nineteen eighty eight truck that we'll be putting out to for sale shortly. Also, last week, the truck that the city commission approved at its last meeting arrived on Saturday. And there's an item with regards to it being later on on the agenda. This is cold weather returning. DPW has resumed work on rebuilding the ice springs up in Adelaide, and hopefully we'll have that operational for too long. I've got a couple of comments here with regards to the state of the union, state of the state, and the state of the union addresses that are coming up. The governor's is Wednesday at seven, and then the president's is March first. Those might give us some initial clues as to what we might see coming down the pipe from the state or public governments. Our IT contractor was here last week to relocate, reconfigure the hardware that's providing connections. That allowed us to use the monitors in the commission chambers as we're all aware. We've been having lots of problems with that where they were pretty glitchy. They seem to work well during Friday's city commission work session, and so far it's over today, and I think on the press wood, it will continue to do so. We've got reviewing the applications that we have for our various openings for the water wastewater, the. Executive assistant and the director of public works position. So far, I have one interview scheduled for on the wastewater superintendent's position on Monday. We'll continue to be working forward on that. Do you have any other questions or on these other items, I'd be glad to kind of.
Thinking, Mike, I have a question if there's time.
Yeah, how many applications did we get to where we got before this timeline? And then you mentioned the other, you've got. We've got quite a few.
Just about that, Eric.
We've got quite a few for the executive assistance position. So we'll be working our way through that. I would say probably in excess of thirty. I haven't reviewed them yet to see what their qualifications are, and just one or two for the DPW director's position.
Do you want to pushers? All right. Thank you, Mike. You're welcome. Moving on, we have the important office boards and standing committees. We have November twenty financial statement and then December twenty financial statement. Any questions, commissioners, on financial statement? Okay, moving on and go to old business. We have item eight A, the Marina placeholder, but we're using that for this. Did you come prepared for it?
I mean, the only thing that I thought of is is you wanted to report to the public that the city commission did approve a motion at that work session. Directing staff to put out your bids, rebuilding of a new dot D. And to try and to get that done and report back to the city commission with bids at our February twenty eighteen. I have. I was anticipating this being a whole agenda topic, so I do have two items that I'd like to bring up on that subject. I don't know if you'd like to go to the public first, like Mike, to do a memo review of the topic prior to the board discussion.
Are you prepared, Mike, given?
No, there is no memo review because there wasn't on in the packet.
So maybe we could take public comment in after you express.
Okay, so the first was just an update kind of from that meeting to now, if there even is an update, I'm anticipating it's probably likely not. Yes, there, I can give you a update if you'd like. I've reached out to. Our C two A E engineers to Evan Marsh and to flotation dock and systems. To get from them what they think would be the appropriate next steps and what assistance they can give. One of the main questions I had for them is just for rebuilding dot D in its current configuration. Would we need a permit from the Army Corps and the Waterways Eagle, excuse me? They indicate that they believe so. Sorry, you said that we would have to recommend? That we would have to get a permit?
Okay.
I didn't say re, correct, but we, the permit would be necessary to do that work, they believe.
Right.
I didn't say re-permit, correct, but we, the permit would be necessary to do that work, they believe, right? So, and I just received. An email this morning, a little after ten, from Cody with a number of items that he suggests. That we look at and prepare going forward with regards to it. I haven't had a chance to review that prior to this morning, or today's meeting yet. But he was very helpful with my conversation yesterday, and provided information today. So I'm trying to reach out to the people that would give me some guidance with regards to. Trying to put some type of a bid package together that would meet the desires of the commission. I also went on my City Managers' list, or reaching out to other waterfront communities to see if they had other contractors. That they felt could do this type of work. We use mainly location document systems, and so far I've only heard of one other contractor that might be able to do that. So, so anyway, just a real, preliminary, basic, rough work to try and implement the commission's motion. And the others, so. And I guess to inform the commission after the meeting last Friday, I did have a conversation with the City Manager in regards to that agenda topic. After that conversation, I would like to bring it to the commission as far as. Obviously, because at that meeting, we did hear that potentially if we're building dot D in the current state, we wouldn't have to get a permit. Now that I'm hearing that, we would still have to get a permit essentially from this update. Just now, I would encourage the commission to create a consensus to have the city administration send out a formal notice to the permitting agencies. With an intent to modify or modify the design concept with number three, if we get a response back from them with approval, great. That gives us an initiative to move forward. If the response is that, if they come back with a formal response that they need X, Y, Z in order to have that modified permitting. We now have an answer of what is needed, a formal response, and not a hypothetical what if theory. And maybe the city administration can provide information with X. It might have to reach out to a third-party contractor, insulted engineering firm for Y and Z, but at least we have a formal response at that point in time. So the debating back and forth on hypothetical, non-formal, could be squashed. So I'll throw it out there.
Were you gonna do that, Mike?
My next step after reaching out to Evan Marsh and Cody was to basically contact by phone initially. Both of the contacts that we have from Eagle and the Water and the Army Corps Engineers. Describe the situation that we have, and get their guidance as to what steps are necessary. And then ultimately, one way or the other, confirm that in writing. But I wasn't looking to submit anything in writing to the person, I figured there'd be probably more progress made by having an informal discussion at first time. Obviously, I want to not produce any more barriers than we need to, to get this work done. I want to document what they actually end up saying, but I'm also sensitive that we don't have much time to do this work either. We're consistent. I'm not, just because we've consistently had informal conversations from these agencies that have led nowhere, so. Repeating the same scenario and having no growth or progress on the Marina, I think, is. Lack of ownership on our hands, so I would encourage a formal response. To develop a leg in the stands for this commission to finally make a decision to move forward. Just repeating what we've done so far, obviously, as the concept ping, in regards to Marina already from our last meeting, it's been zero progress, so. Why repeat the same thing? I would like a formal response, whether it's through email, whether it's through a letterhead. Whether it's a two-sentence or a paragraph. I think formally reaching out to these permitting agencies, getting a formal response for the commission and for the public is appropriate and correct. That, I agree a thousand percent with Tim, and that's been the problem, that's why, I mean, we. We could have had this conversation in. That, I told them, and we just kept, you know, ignoring the elephant in the room, so unless we, I'll say it again. So we finally, you know, took action on it, to get something done, and then get it done, so we can move forward with the rest of it. So I'm a thousand percent, it's all what ifs, that's just what we keep, keep getting, no matter who they are, Adam Marsh, what ifs, you know. And that's been frustration, so I think, you know, I think a formal response, you know, from Eagle and Michigan Waterways. Their letterhead saying, you know, if this is what you're asking me, then this is. And to kind of put that, and since we sit here at a mission and we, our conversations are back and forth on this what if, or this informal response, or. Potentially this engineer's verbal conversation that we can't hold weight to when it comes to leaders within our community. But just to spin, as Marty just said, if we started this. Earlier, and we had a formal response, think how much part of it we would be at this point in time. I can tell you right now, if there was a formal response from these permitting agencies. The motion and the decisions and the failed motions already would, wouldn't have gone the way that they didn't have. So keep that in back of your mind, I guess if you're trying to decide on if a formal response is appropriate or not. Because I think the direction where some commissioners would like to go, we would probably be there if we had a formal response. To establish a ground for this commission to move forward instead of just informal what ifs. So.
Mike?
Well, I would disagree with regards to Commissioner Nemecheck's characterization that we have made no progress with regards to that. I think the progress that has been made by remaining in communications with the permitting agencies as we have, is we've kept that door open. We've kept them appraised as to where we were, that gave the commission time to determine and to get us to concept three. That the commission now said, had said earlier to move forward with. Now we're moving in a different direction, but we've kept our options open. My concern is if we push permitting agencies for a formal decision. The easiest thing for them to say is, basically, no, you're gonna have to re-permit this whole process over again. And that's gonna be at least, as Evan Marsh reported previously, six months or maybe a longer period of time. Because there are, if you have to start the whole process over again. There are public hearings involved, there's opportunities for appeals, and things of that nature. We may be dead in the water, even if we want to rebuild dot D, whichever configuration, and the commission already chose which configuration at our last meeting. We may not be able to do anything for a grand period of time. I think the course that we've been going on is prudent. Again, our goal as administrators is to give the commission as many options as it can, as it can. For whatever direction it ultimately decides to go, and I'm concerned that if we push the permitting agencies too far. They'll take the easiest solution for them, which is start the process over again.
If. We're, I respectfully disagree. I, I mean, the bottom line, we've asked at every meeting, and you know, and Evan Marsh can't answer the question, and you can't answer the question, right? And it's, you know, okay, where do we stand with this? Well, we sort of stand here, you know, but we're not sure that we stand here, but we might stand over here. And so every, every meeting is the same way, so I, no, we don't have definitive answers. So that's why I'm completely with, you know, Tim, asking them for, for. Proof, I'll let them, saying, you let this lie, or you not let this lie? I, I think it's, it's, you know, pretty much a, a simple question, which is why? You know, we had to reset the clock and go back and go, okay, look, probably the easiest thing, so we can finally get. The elephant in the room taken care of, and get D dot, you know, taken care of, and built so we can use it. So we can do A dot and E dot and the improvements on the C dot. That's why I respectfully disagree with the comments that were made. I, I mean, there's, there's a lot that this commission voted on to, you know, due to this Marina, and, and, but. It's like I said last Friday, we got, we got a problem before we walk, we got to live within our means, and I think, you know. Tim's request to have that in writing and say, you know, where are we standing? Then there's no, then there's no Evan Marsh going. You know, and, and you, you're going, wow, Evan Marsh said, okay, I'm paying, you know, now we got it right there. Black and white, and there's nothing better than black and white.
Right, and so I'm just gonna clarify on some talking points that the City Manager said about my talking points. When I'm speaking about progress, we have made progress, this commission unanimously voted on concept three. And I would like to know what progress has been made in the last three agenda topics this has been out there. Zero, the breakdown is the financial side, some members of this commission want willingly to spend six thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money. Not knowing if it's gonna go anywhere or not, me, I'm not spending six thousand dollars until I have an answer from the committee agencies. It's very, I mean, it's, it's a no-brainer to me. If you want to spend six thousand dollars and potentially be told, no, sorry, you're gonna have to go through the re-permit phase. You just wasted that six thousand dollars, you just pushed the timeline out, not the agencies just pushed the timeline out from under us, so. If, and if there's such a strong sense in the communication from Arvin Mach. From the city administration of all these non-formal verbal conversations of, yeah, that most likely you strongly, strongly will get it passed. And strongly, we won't have to redo the permitting, perfect. Then take that to the next level, give the commission something to stand on, you would have gotten a yes for me two meetings ago. To move forward with Arvin Mach, but because of the lack of formal decisions from these permitting agencies is why we're not moving forward. So if, like I said, repeat the same scenario of progress, we're going out on a limb, it'll be zero. I'm not spending six thousand dollars until the permitting agencies have a formal response, not just a what-if question mark response. And the feedback that I'm getting is the what-if question mark response is so strong, it's like a nine out of ten, that they'll let us do it. And it won't be a six thousand dollar waste, perfect, put that nine out of ten on paper then. It's a no-brainer, but then again. I guess there's a little less concern to seeing taxpayers' money in some areas here.
The question I guess I have is, what would a formal request be to the permitting agency, what permitting agency are we talking about? Is it the Michigan Department of Waterways grant that was approved for the expansion going to the Northeast? Or is it the money that was, that, that, that grant for the electrical repair dot D?
Neither. So the formal response, and this, I brought this up, the same as that question to the engineering firm, Arvin Mach, Mike Murphy, and I'm on Friday's meeting. I asked, what would that initiative, formal request to the permitting agencies be? And I'm using the terminology permitting agencies, which is two, Eagle, Army Corps Engineers, not talking about Waterways Commission. I get that, that's a no-brainer, you can see how they're consistently budgeting that, even though we're in the next fiscal year, the state, the state's holding those funds. So read between the lines there, the permitting agencies, we're being told that we have these informal conversations, it's a nine out of ten. But potentially they could still say no, even though we sent them the alternated draft and concept. If they say, you know, it bumps us back and it kind of throws a whole thing for another three sixty spin, but. Mike's feedback on that question was, what does that look like? Mike said basically it was just a formal letter saying, hey, we are changing or modifying the designs. Here are the designs, which we are sending, I'm gonna put that out there, we are sending the modified designs. But it is just a formal letter from us to them, saying that we are looking to modify the permitting design. This was the original, now this is the design. And go more in depth with that conversation with Mike Murphy, he even said, since we are reducing the footprint, most likely it would be approved. But we don't know. We don't, we just want to spend six thousand dollars without knowing, and maybe, hope fingers crossed, it is a yes. Well, the problem that we have is, that was not the motion that the commission made at our meeting on Friday. The motion that the commission made in our meeting that was approved by the commission on Friday was to move forward with dot D in its current configuration. That current configuration is an odd of concept three, the two are not in line. So if I go forward to try and get this project bid, as it was approved at the commission meeting on Friday. I have to approach those permitting agencies and have them basically say, will they grant me a, or grant us a permit? Or modifier permit to allow the extension or the rebuilding of dot D in its current configuration. That's a different question than basically saying, is concept three formidable? Preferably, and what I argued at our, argued or suggested at our meeting on Friday, is that we modified a concept. Or modified the motion to rebuild a reduced proportion of dot D. Basically, that aligns with the size of the current dot D, but has the fingers split for the fairways. That suggestion was not, was not approved and didn't go forward. So we have two competing dot D plans that are out there. The one that was approved at the City Commission meeting on Friday, which is the footprint of what we have there, and then the one that's shown on that plan there. They're slightly different, I mean, to, in many respects, they're very similar. But they have implications for the future development. And if I go to the permitting agencies and say, can we rebuild dot D as it is now? That's a different question, and I wouldn't like to go back to them shortly thereafter and say, okay, well, here's a whole nother different. I'm afraid of tossing too many different versions of them and asking too many different questions. Ultimately, they're just gonna say, no, Boyne City doesn't have its act together, they should start over.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're comparing apples and oranges, because the underlying aspect of what you're saying, like, is, you're confusing. The, the fact, the fact that. You're confusing the grant aspect, and we asked Evan, okay, if we do this, if we do, if, if, if we reduce to this, are we still gonna pick up enough? In E and A to still get the grants, which I'd like to, you know, I, I don't know, we got, it, it seems that we got the grants. Because they, they, they show up in our budget, and I don't understand how they show up in our budget, which is, which is crazy. But the, the aspect that, you know, hinging, hinging fixing this so we can use it. Versus, you know, the, the rest of these grants, for now, I said at the meeting last week, if, you know, if. Tom and I are sitting here going back forth, but if we got to start around the rest, then, then so be it with the, you know, for the grant process, but we got fix dot D. And then, so here's the other aspect, okay? And we're looking at this like, well, I went back October, but it went all, went back to, you know, May, and, 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 and we argued at that meeting. And Arvin Wash wanted thirty eight thousand dollars from us, we gave eleven thousand. Didn't really get anything out of that, and then they came back, and, and we, we decided, you know, they wanted more money to do the concepts. And then we, we decided, okay, we're gonna do it this way, got a reduced aspect on that, and then they came back again. I, I, you know, it, it just, it, it's just the horse going to the bell, and we're not, we're not getting anywhere, we're getting anything, and we just keep, it's just a can, there it is, just kick, just kick, just get it out there. So that, that was the main crux of how we got to the last Friday. And, you, you know, until, you know, until we get the answers that, you know, Tim is requesting, I think. There's nothing on the level we can do, I don't believe it.
Will?
Well, beginning with, I think it's pretty arrogant for us to tell the state how to do their job, for us to tell them that we need this. Ben, in writing on your letterhead, and this is the way you should operate your business, I think that'd be arrogant. Pretend to imply that, that we're wasting money, six thousand dollars. I think is a false statement, because six thousand dollars is buying us the services. That we needed, the professional help that we needed to get us to the next step. And, and I, I resent that you are saying that we purposefully are spending six thousand dollars. That is for professional help, every project that we've done in the last eleven-plus years I've been on the City Commission, you hire professional help. I don't care if it's the pavilion, I don't care if it's the Marina, it's Avalanche, the open space. The pickleball courts, the twelve, we've done twelve roads in twelve years, every single aspect, you hire professional help. Six thousand dollars for that professional help to get us to the next step is, was a bargain. And, and for us to put that on mic. Mike doesn't know how to spec a doc, he doesn't know how to. Sworn to work, that's, you got it, Mike. Back, the, the next topic is, I agree with Pete, I agree with Mike. The application process, well, we, we must back up, we made the motion to approve. Plan three. And then, two weeks later, we made a motion to, uh, uh, I guess amend that to, uh, DOT D just as it is. Which does not fit into the overall vision. I, I just, I think, um, Marty, we, we go down your path, I agree, that, if, if the cost for DOT D. But it shouldn't fit into. The overall plan that works. Reversing those fairways is huge. And that was explained to us, Tim. By Mike Murphy from Evan Marsh, it was too wide, he flipped the fairways. So that it, and so, it was, it's very short sighted to build a DOT. Currently, as it sits, that was designed thirty-two years ago, that does not fit. The overall plan that we already approved. Going conclusion. If it was so simple to get a letterhead approval from the state, it would've been done. We can't tell the state how to do the job. Number two, spending six thousand dollars is money well spent. Number three. Um. Yes, I like Marty's idea of breaking it down and just starting with DOT D, but DOT D should fit the overall vision, the new design, not the old design. That a thirty-year-old design does not fit in. To the vision of. Of what we approved.
Any response to that?
Um, I'd like to speak. Again, is there a way, Mike, that you could draft a letter that we could review for the center, just so we know what exactly we're talking about? If, if, when we say this, is actually see a document, this is what we're sending. See the uh, the permitting provision, or the, the, uh, sign off from the agency for us to go ahead. Before we send it.
Sure, it's always possible to see documentation.
And then we can be discussing something, then, then we, we feel, have in front of us, and we, we understand what it is. That, that would be my suggestion, Tim.
So, basically, uh. Tom says that it's arrogant, it's literally a requirement. Uh, we, that's what the service of six thousand dollars is, and instead of him doing the letter, it is paying six thousand dollars to someone else to do it. So it's not arrogant, it's actually a requirement by the state for permitting agencies. Um, and two, it is. Uh. A little bit of a risk to spend, I understand the services and spending the money on the services, I've been part of several motions where we've done that. But there's never been an email from December seventh saying that if you do spend this, and the agency comes back saying you need to recommit. You're kind of dead in the water, thanks for the, thanks for the money. Um, so there is a risk there, whether it's. Clear to some, or not clear to some, I guess that kind of shows, I guess, some style of leadership there. But it is a requirement, it's not arrogant, whether you, this guy's gonna do it, or Mike Murphy's gonna do it, and we pay him to do it. Um, so yeah, so with that being said, I'll make a motion that the city administration drafts a letter. To send out a formal notice of, to the permitting agencies, a intent to modify the design. If we get a response back for approval, I'm not reading all this, but yeah, that, that's my motion. So, whether we're moving forward or not, it's gonna be determined right here, so, with that being said, that's the motion.
Or is that, oh.
Did you have a second?
That's the motion. Hey, Mike? Well, and, um, when Commissioner Nowicki first brought up this, this, this proposed motion or his language that he was talking about. He made a reference to concept three. So, and in many respects, I agree with Tim that we want to get an answer with regards to the permit, one way or the other. You're right, there, I think there's a stylistic difference with regards to it. I found that not forcing an agency to tell you something you don't wanna hear sometimes works to your advantage if you're trying to keep your options open. And I think that's what we've been able to do up to this point. But. The next step in my process, based on the information I've gotten so far since our meeting on Friday, was, yes, we need to find out more about what our permit. Status is. So I agree with that. I think I've heard two different things around this table, based on what I was, the direction I was given on Friday. The permit, I, the, uh, the permit that I need to get clarified, that we need to go forward with is the existing DOT D. As it is. Do we have to get a permit modification or do something to, but to basically reconstruct DOT D as it currently says? And that is different. Than getting permission or a sign off from the permitting agencies with regards to concept three. Those two are at odds. And, uh, Mike Murphy, you know, in my conversation with him on Monday. Basically told me that, that those are two different things, that the proposed DOT D that was approved on Friday is not compatible with concept three as it was approved by the city commission. So. I've got two conflicting commission motions. The most current, the one that I'm actioning on, is the one that the commission gave us on Friday, which is move forward with DOT D rebuild. My question to the permitting agency, based on that motion, would be. Do I need, do we need a permit for that, or a modification for it, and can we get that? And then go down that path and get that in writing. Uh. So we can go on for the bids and the other parts that the commission wanted. Again, that is different than getting a permit, uh, clarification with regards to concept three, cuz the two are not compatible.
Oh, I did. Mike Murphy sat right here and said, you know, it probably is not going to affect, send it in the meeting. So, with that being said, he's not sure, all Tim is saying that he's not gonna spend six thousand dollars to find out, sure. We're, we're asking the city manager to do that, and you know full well, it was not. Why we had to, you know, uh, go back to the configuration of DOT D, because of, you know, we go from trying to get, get DOT D done. There's no sense in the cash.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's like, blows my mind.
We already have a direction, I, 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 I think Tim, all Tim's saying is, you know, find out our status, where are we?
Uh, and we, we have a motion, is that, and would you, would you read the warning to that group's, uh, thinking?
I only got. The city administration draft a letter.
To draft a, a formal notice to the permitting agencies with an intent to modify this area.
Thank you.
With an intent to design, modify the design to what? Am I going to current D or concept three? No, we're going to. The existing.
Let me ask you this. With the permit that these agencies have right now, would either one of them be a modification?
That's the question I need to find out, Tim.
You just told me in the beginning. Because on Friday, we were told, most likely would not have to go for a modification permit, and this is why we're in two different directions. And, and. The reason why we went this direction is because we were told that if we spend six thousand dollars. And we send this on, and we spend six thousand dollars, and not we, we pay someone else to do the letter. Send it off to the permitting agencies, and we get told, no, sorry, you do need to do a re, uh, re. Re-adaptation for the recommitment. What does that do to our timeline? That bumps, are we still gonna get a new the D doc by this fall? No, because it could take up to six months to a year for the application process for the permitting. And I would encourage you to go back and listen to the meeting, and listen to that dialogue and that conversation. Because from there, we tied in sixty thousand dollars that we lost, right? And so then the conversation goes from sixty thousand dollars that we're losing annually and revenue, because we don't have D doc. Then we go on to, do we wanna continue to lose another sixty thousand dollars? How do we stop losing sixty thousand dollars? Do we have to get a re-permit modification permit if we do D doc in the way that it is? No, listen to the video, watch the meeting, that's what we were told. Now I'm being told something different by the city administration, that even if we did do D doc, we still might have to go through a re-permit, a modification permitting process. Which then again, would bring up the loss of sixty thousand dollars in revenue. So then what does that do? Well, it sounds like you're gonna have to re-permit, get a modification, re-do the application process, whether you go this way, or whether you go this way. So at the end of the day, if you go this way, you're gonna have to do what I'm asking you to do. If you go this way, you're gonna have to do what I'm asking you to do. The difference is, do we pay someone six thousand dollars to do it, and not know if we're gonna recoup that, or recoup a, a continuation of those services? Or be told, sorry, no, and then it bumps back down a year. So at the end of the day, it's a no brainer, it's common sense, it's pretty black and white, I would encourage. Us to track our own conversations, because it seems like we're, we have a difficult time even doing that.
Well, with that, um, uh, do we have, do we have a motion, I, I'd like to hear a motion, should we, or whatever.
City administration to draft a formal letter with intent to modify the permitting design.
Mike. Based on what Commissioner Nowicki, uh, said, as we know. I think, and basically the only thing that was holding us back from moving forward with concept D and the six thousand dollars at our last meeting. Was getting this permit. That, I, that would've been an appropriate question, I believe, to ask staff and or Evan Marsh to get that question nailed down. There's no problem with regards to getting that question nailed down. Uh, now that we have a direction with regards to it. Um. Or right now, I've got two different directions that I'm being forced. I mean, we're having to make a decision as to which way we're going. With regards to it. Um. With regard, again, I don't mean to be repetitive, but. I think we've got one opportunity to ask the, the permitting agencies which concept we're going forward with. And the commission used to, uh, choose with, as it considers this motion, if we're gonna approve it, uh, which concept it wants me to, uh. Uh, seek clarification from. I feel that they said that Friday. And George isn't here.
I think, I, I, you know, I'm really troubled by our attitude toward each other. Um, I, I don't think it's healthy. And I don't think it's good, we may not share the same opinion, I think, but, uh, I, I, I'm really troubled by that. And, um. You know, we, we gotta get it together. We gotta get it together, uh, we throw numbers out, six, we're losing sixty thousand dollars, I'm still trying to figure out when this sixty thousand dollars is, I don't wanna get into that discussion, but, but I have some, I think about that. So, but, it's, it's something that can eat, you know, throwing things and. Whatever, um, so we have a motion, we have a standing. For the discussion, or, uh, we're gonna have to limit the discussion here quickly, so go ahead.
Marty? Yeah, since we're not, I understand that. So I vote for the letter to be drafted. The state agencies. Asking for clarification, or actually, actually asking for. A yea or nay. Um, if I vote for that, would you vote for going back to, uh, the concept? Of not DOT D as current, but DOT D as envision three?
The request, I don't think they expect it to be right now.
So basically, I have no issue with going to the concept three. I, there was a unanimous vote for concept three, I agree to concept three. The breakdown of concept three is because of the sixty thousand dollar loss of revenue and not having a timeline on that. That sixty thousand dollar figure came from the city administrator, I did not come up with it, those are the dollar amounts that came from him to us at Friday's meeting, so.
Yeah, and, and I went back and looked at it, and I thought you meant to include it, so. So, totally.
So yeah, I'm one hundred percent, I hold myself accountable, I have integrity level, I agree to concept three, I still agree to concept three. Unless we're blindly trying to chase concept three with a risk of spending money where we don't get to an outcome and we continue to lose sixty thousand dollars.
So we started this conversation with you wanting a definite answer on letterhead from the state agencies. So, I will like that, will we go back to concept B, we're solving two issues at once?
Yeah.
Or the concept of DOT D as presented in. Sam Bridge.
Yep.
No. The, the problem is, no, we talked about, again. It, it's, the, the attenuators come into play, okay? We, so now, now, now you're not talking about DOT. Now, we can only build, we can only build DOT D if we not, if, if we build the rest of the estate. Now, this year, before next year, that's the problem, that's why we, that's why we had the vote backed up and went to D doc as it exists today. Because you don't have to do anything with your attenuators, the attenuators that are in place now. Are precise.
And, and we, and we agree, Marty, that we was building back, you know, up to the point of the current attenuator.
That's where it's at now.
If you did, Marty, if you did concept three according to that, they, they could do, you wouldn't have to extend our attenuators currently.
Oh, no, well, that's what we talked about with that, right?
Right.
Yeah.
He said that we wouldn't have to extend our attenuators, that we can utilize and maintain our current attenuators for that development within that root shape.
Which, yeah, which, which is, which is, the, the DOT D as it exists, no.
No, the finger length, the, 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 what are those called, finger?
Finger dots.
Finger dots are flip flops.
Two of them are, yeah.
That's, that's critical to the overall, I think.
It's, 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 it's critical, okay, let's.
Yeah, I think, I think, we're good, well, see, we have, we. We're having some philosophical, we're, we're interpreting things, we're looking at who, who we vote, move on, and, 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 kind of, kind of. What, what I'm, it's middle class.
Very interesting. So, uh. We ready to vote? One last time.
Well, I think you're forcing us to, you, you're cutting off title, so don't ask if we're ready to vote, you just cut off title, tell us to vote. And please hand it back to that, this very.
Is there, is there any public comment on?
Yeah, that's a good one, we've got, we've seen in our own conversation, so, uh, we, we would have opened it up now for public comment. Please move to the podium, or pay your name and address, and, uh, if you're looking to, uh, five minutes.
Adam Gray, getting one three nine West Michigan, here in Wayne City, I just wanna make a comment about this. The dock has been like one of the biggest hot topics here. In Wayne City. And on this agenda happening, there was just a placeholder here for this, this is, this has become a little bit bigger of a deal than just. What's happened here in this dialogue, I mean, essentially, it sounds like this vote can either kill. Everything that was happening. It's essentially what Tim had said here, this is kind of yes or no, or whether we go or move forward. And I, I just, I mean, if this is gonna be such a huge conversation, I think this is, you need to get it back to the community, but. I mean, I, I, I just don't understand. How you move something forward, and then we've gone to this huge, long discussion again about moving things forward, so. I mean. That's it. Anyone else?
James Richmond, seven two, I remember part of that. Yeah, I think you guys are almost there with this, if you can fit in. The, this concept, which I've spent two and a half hours of my life, uh, one night, and you guys are here a lot longer than that. We agree to this proposal, proposal C, if you guys can do D doc the way this is, it sounds like, Tim, you think that, that you can. Uh, with this, and that's our first phase, I think that makes a lot of sense. That we use D doc, but do it in this concept, that man scares me here, if you guys wanna modify it after we, you guys agreed to this. And then we're not gonna build it out parcel by parcel, which I think was really smart. Tom, Tom, you, I, Commissioner Tom, you, you're right on, I think, uh, you know, you said, you guys are compromising, you're almost there. Don't do the old D doc style, I, I must have misunderstood a different conversation. This was our plan, I'm so happy that, that that was passed, you guys did it. So stick with us, make this work, hope that made any sense, thank you. So stick with us, make this work. Hope that made any sense. Thank you.
In three, four, one, five, high street, they agree completely, let it shift that. We have this awesome design, it's compromised with the community, we don't have to go bring it back up. You guys are so close to making the right decision. Consider D doc in this phase, our first phase of this reestablishment. They're so close, and Tim's there, I think everybody's there, and Marty convinced that if we're going to build something, build it to this plan. Don't build something that doesn't work in phase three. That's what you've got to do, 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 that's what you guys are gonna do. Go into new phase, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner, do you want to comment before?
Yeah, I have one last comment. Just for clarification with the public, even with this Concept Three right here, that we did agree and vote on, it still has not been approved by the permitting agencies. They have approved a design that was done in twenty twenty one, way prior to this concept here. This concept was an alternated concept that the commission asked Harvin Mauch to create. Um, timeline was November. No, it was November, the last, last November.
It got extended.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But this design has not been reviewed by the permitting agencies, yet. And the issue is spending six thousand dollars moving forward with services without these permitting agencies saying, yes, this concept that the city commission approved last November is approved by the state and approved by the Army Engineering Corps, or is not approved. So, that's what we're trying to figure out. We need to get a formal decision from these permitting agencies, we do not have that. Do we pay an engineering firm to do that service for us? Or do we just send a letterhead out to the engineer, the permitting agencies ourselves? Um, so that's kind of where we're at.
I fully agree that we need to get some clarity with regards to the permit. My recommendation to the commission would be to basically go to the permitting agencies. And I would prefer that you not micromanage how you exactly do that. But to get us a permit, get us an answer within a certain period of time, um, ASAP. But honestly, thinking no longer than thirty days. Um, that would permit Concept Three, and if we wouldn't have that answer that, uh, everybody seems to want with regards to it. That seems to be the critical next step. If we go, and, and I agree with Commissioner Nemechek. That the proposed DOT D replacement in Concept Three can be done in such a shortened version that it doesn't affect the wave attenuators. And we don't have to build the wave attenuators or interfere with any of the other dock arrangements. So we can build a shorter current ver, a new version of DOT D in a similar footprint, and I think really, really close to what you wanted to, Commissioner. Woody, um, and get that one going forward, uh, without putting the rest of the plan at risk. Um, and that may be what I didn't convey properly at our last meeting on, on Friday. Uh, cause I think we're talking about the width versus the length. And the length is what gets us in trouble with the wave attenuators. And I think doing a shortened version of the proposed DOT D replacement in Concept Three and finding out, first find out if it's all permissible for this Concept Three. Getting that in writing, so we have that answer, then the commission can determine what are many next steps it wants to go. Um, to me, that makes the most sense, and I'm completely in support of that, and, you know, I think that's a good way. But again, I would still ask the commission, basically, if you feel like you need to, give me that direction, approve a motion that says that. But give me the latitude on how we do that, so we don't paint ourselves into a corner where we're not able to do anything for a whole extended period of time.
I would make a motion, following that, if, if Tim would be willing to, uh, with, uh, what you call?
With your.
Withdraw his motion, I would make a motion and, and declare that six thousand dollars on the table. The two, the issues are, having Mike representing Wayne City follow through with the commitment and having Mike follow through with the big concept for extending this version back, or version three, extending back D as far as we can go using the current, that would be my motion. The most huge failure. So let's make your clear, I think you thought, I'm, I'm not against doing, making our concept. The bottom line was, Evan Marsh said that, you know, moving forward, the quickest, shortest avenue was, so we didn't have, supposedly, we didn't have to repermit to do the old DOT D. But now supposedly, we seem to maybe have to permit to do the old DOT D. Which is, again, it's, 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 I, I have a problem, how you build DOT D and how we get it approved. The, as long as we do, that, that's how we got the last ride. It was just finally backing into a corner and just going, okay, listen, here, being put on the spot, you gotta make a decision. Because we can't live with it the way that it is. So, the, the problem is, Evan Marsh said that the part of the green, you know, and, and flip and everything probably can be done, but that's the repermitting process. He alluded that if we build it the old way, that's how we got the next vote, was that probably didn't have to, have to repermit it. So, if, which brought Tim to his question today. If we can get a straight answer, then we know which direction we can go, because we, we can't redo the attenuator.
Then, then I think we're on agreement, right?
I do. That was a long one.
Mike? And if you can, I think if we've approached the permitting agencies with regards to Concept Three as it is laid out now, and they did say no, the next appropriate question I think would be for me or whoever to ask is, okay, if we can't do that, can we do, can we rebuild DOT D as it is currently to get something done quicker?
That's, is that we can't, I mean, to be clear, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not in favor of, again, shoveling this whole, you know, uh, proposal three to restart the whole process, when, you know, if, if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna approach them all, then we're approaching them about DOT D in and of itself, in the green square, however you want it to be. But in the green square, Evan Marsh was very clear, you're back into repermit.
And I'd be glad to get that answer for the city question.
That's how we started this.
So, did you have a motion?
Yeah, so my motion is basically this, the city having.
What, what, what have we had, uh, thank you, really.
City administration to draft a formal letter within ten to modify the current design.
Yep.
Now, I said Concept Three, then everyone started chirping that they didn't want Concept Three tied in there, so I took that out. So now I'm hearing that we want Concept Three tied back into that motion?
Yeah, because that motion, we can go back to Billy, that would be as a. I, I would like to make a motion, well, like I said, giving the permit issue solved.
You need to, Tom, you need to modify DOT D, whether we're doing this, whether we're doing the way it is. That is exactly what he told me, the very first question I asked. So we need to know if we can modify it from the twenty twenty plans that were sent, what, when was it sent, twenty twenty?
I'm not sure, Tim.
With the application, so Eagle and Army Corps of Engineers had an application from twenty twenty that is not that, that is not what's current, it's some design that we don't have in front of us that's old, it's been shot down, doesn't exist, so period, we need to modify it. Now, I can change, really, there shouldn't even be a motion, it should just be a consensus of three commissioners telling the administrator, go do this. But obviously, just breaking down, so then I created a motion to try and have some commissioners basically highlight their unwillingness to move forward with it. Um, this kind of was the catch twenty-two there, but at the end of the day, it needs to be modified. Concept Three, I'm perfectly fine for it. I voted that, I voted this through, so I'm not gonna sit here and say, I don't support this, I fully support this.
So let's follow through with that. And go with the permit process for that. And then part two is to build D according to that as far as we can go. No, D is not the, the ultimate, D is the front center.
Okay, okay, how do we move forward here?
We, we, I think Tim discussed, consensus, city commission, we're in order to, right?
We should have confidence in our city administrator to take what he threw for the last hour and, and, uh, draft a letter to the agencies to get the answers to the questions that we're hearing. Are, are, are we, do we have confidence in that?
Again, I would ask the commission to basically give me a consensus that you want me to go get clarity with regards to our permitting status with regards to Concepts Three, that ultimately results in a written correspondence from a permitting agency, so you have documentation with regards to it. And let me figure out how to get there.
Here is my decision, I am okay with this green shaded area as long as we don't have to extend our attenuators.
So. So, Tim, you've made a motion.
Mm-hmm.
We've talked now about a consensus, city managers heard from here, and we have that we've given him the direction without a specific motion, and we're leaving it on his best judgment to move us forward.
Yeah, in my opinion, you, you need to draft a formal notice to the permitting agencies with an intent to modify DOT D.
Uh, uh, following Plan Three? Yeah, that's, that's open three, following.
I'm okay with doing not the whole, doing the modification, it's still a modification, Tom.
That process has to include Plan Three, and then we build it step by step. First step with D. If it's in, I think we'd say the same thing, I'm just asking temporary.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with, you think not the whole thing, cause then we go into the financials of not having the money for the attenuators. But I'm one hundred percent okay with the green shaded area.
I am too.
Because we have the financials for that. But I don't wanna set us up to fail with attenuators, because it's in a fall, we're on the financial side of it.
I, I agree. I don't know if your, if your motion says that, that's all, but. I, I, I wasn't motion, I was suggesting that Tim would draw this motion, and he would be interested in, and he just with the city administrator just had an opportunity to listen to the conversation for a lot of hours, though.
I, I wouldn't draw my motion, I don't have any issue whatsoever, I would draw my motion, but I would really like, um, the ball not to be dropped by the next meeting.
And the focus to be on DOT, giving, giving that.
More or less, my maybe is the formal decision by the permitting agencies is what's needed for the city to move forward.
Period. I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, huh? I remember, why? All right, moving on to item B, Social District. Considering the recommendation, which is a player lining, Shannon, did I pronounce that right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. To review your application, provide recommendations of the public mainstream board regarding new, the data changes. Would you mind going over to the, uh, for you? Are, are you gonna leave presentation?
I can't, I don't know. We, do you have, uh, Main Street Board members here that could come to a little better job?
Well, they'll have their opportunities.
As you guys know, the Main Street Board has, um, put together a nice little packet on the social business. They'd like to create going food for the benefit of the restaurant and bar owners to be able to, um, sell alcoholic beverages to folks who can then wander around the downtown district and enjoy their beverage while they're seeing the sights and go shopping and all that other happy stuff. Um, so with the help of the Main Street Board, who really did most of the work on this, um, we've got our application packet ready to center the state to establish our social district. And the materials that I've provided, showing the, the resolution that was done in October by the commission. And our maintenance and management plan for the social district and a map for the area. And pretty much a complete packet ready to go to the state upon final approval by the Main Street Board. If you guys have any suggestions for changes, now, when you.
Thank you. Anyone from Main Street who wanted to, um, add?
I don't know if there's much to add, I, I, I would be, be welcome to answer any questions you guys have specifically. I think the plan there, uh, it's been, yeah, I guess, six month progress, what we've kind of come to, um. I don't know, do you guys have any questions for us? We've had various meetings and whatnot about this, so. Um, met with Officer Spade and his crew to get their insight on, on the map and the whole social district, so.
Anyone else?
One? That is, very real quickly, uh, James, you identified yourself. Yeah, James Richmond, from Genali Park Drive. Uh, the various communities around Michigan that we've reached out to, uh, including Gaylor, uh, Pataasee, um, Farmington, Farmington, maybe a couple others, it's all been real positive. Uh, I think the expectation were, were more of, uh, problems with alcohol related incidents, and that didn't come up, it, it, only really positive things, which is somewhat surprising but true. Um, so I think this would be a really good thing for, for Wayne City moving forward. And, uh, again, like I always, like I did add, if it is a move forward, we could, uh, but, uh, I think that we've put a lot of work into it, and it was a pretty positive thing moving forward.
Or one more thing to add, I, I've spoken with, uh, the majority of the restaurant owners within Wayne City. Uh, they are all in support of this, and I think it's also a program that the more they participate, the better, so, um, there's a couple of restaurants we still have to reach out to and see if we can get them on board. But the majority are good for this.
The, just a quick question, what is, I'm sorry, could you, eight, three, four, one, five, high street? What is the, I see a lot of red on the map, and I see a lot of blue dots, just for the public, what is considered the social district?
I can answer that. So the black line around there is actually the Main Street District. Um, all of the red areas are common areas, so there are the parks and whatnot. So those are the places you are allowed to take a beverage to go. Um, the blue dots would be anybody that has a liquor license that is able to apply to the state to serve. Um, so essentially, that's, that the yellow is just the roads and, and you're not allowed to technically drink in the road, so it would only be along the sidewalks and then the parks. So the sidewalks.
Yes.
Go ahead, you're saying you could walk down Lake Street down to the boat launch? Uh, and it would be okay?
We, we, we're gonna have a, a little bit, uh, more detailed map, this was one that Bonnie had done, and it was fantastic, I think. But, uh, we specifically said we're going to mark out the boat launch. So just to the edge of the open space, so that we just don't wanna, uh, you know, allow people to drink there more freely than they already do. Um, and then there in, uh, Veterans Park in that area where the new ball field is going, specifically included that part. Also, and early learners area. So, um, I don't know, the, the other thing that came up during this that we didn't know, I, I didn't know when I learned, but, uh, alcoholic beverages are allowed in public parks.
All right. Before this. Kevin, I'm wondering, um, is it me, way, it seems like with, uh, the main reference, it was so people can enjoy our summer, schools, three, four. So people can enjoy our summer, Stoll Street, Boyland Center, that sort of thing, and be able to walk around town with an open beverage. Is there some way to do that without getting into the social history that we can do openly? Not that I know of. And then there there was something you hear about it being contiguous. So if you went up to the launch area, what what what? You know, alcohol would be up there and make a pan. I didn't quite understand that.
And the wording of of the contiguous is, I I look at it. Like the contiguous United States. I don't know if other districts have, you know, uh, an area here. And then no space in another area. I think that's what they were trying to get away from walking through. There you go. Next. We we wanted to accommodate the open space because I think in in the future, it's going to be an asset for the community. And also with development down on Lake Street, like the lakes, the water, the water on Lake, uh, they're gonna have uh. Retail space below and restaurant space below that could eventually maybe get a permit to for an alcoholic beverage.
Okay. Do you have a comment, question?
I I have one last comment. I I do have a realized map that shows the crosswalks. So in the corners, well, those little street intersections, there's little red squares for the crosswalks within the my original map. It's. And have any way for people to pass the street that they're on?
All right, uh. Tom, you want to start or?
Um, sure. We we talked about this before. I think uh it's coming from overboard Main Street and uh. I mean, full support. I think it'd be an aspect as to improvement in other communities. Um. Stoll Street is a perfect example. Every Friday night, I think it would work, blend in very nicely with that. And with our police department not having any problems with it, I'm in full support.
Yeah, we talked a lot about it on the on the board, as Adam said, and uh they've done a great job on presenting uh. Uh, presented it to the Main Street Board and then um, really, really thought of, you know. Under everything on it. The biggest concern in the beginning was even talking to Hugh Spade, so and um. When uh, when he was willing to, you know, sign off on it, it really made it kind of um. No right, if you will. I mean, you've all worked and put into it and change said that doesn't work, you know, take it back and uh not do it.
Words general.
Uh, yeah, I was in support of it when I made the motion. Um, Chuck Spade's input then too as well. Um, the only question I know was brought up at that meeting and we were discussing it before Main Street moved forward with it. Is um, the deal, were they included in the common area? Do they have intent or desire for that future planning, kind of like you guys' decision with the open space there? Cause. Yeah, the map allows for for them in the future. Right now, they don't have a a liquor license, so um, yeah, we kind of drew the map around uh. For them to be able to, so they would be able to. Okay, true.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm good with it. And I think you were just asking for recommendations since we've already approved this regulation. To review the application and provide recommendations as appropriate in the Main Street Board that are any desire changes. So are you, are we good with it? That or should we think have another?
No formal action is required. We have the input and feedback for the Main Street Board before they uh submit this paper to the state. Questions happy with it and they're good to go.
Right.
Yeah, can I, can I just one question? The only thing that I we didn't talk about was, is is there any, I mean, all this really, I mean, you've got a motel here, but all this is is consumers' powers. It's all consumer power property. So this is the, this is the part. So it's the intent to include the part in that or let's just draw this included motel. Um, well, it's, it it's not a common area there that uh I don't know. I'm not real familiar with that area behind, like if you've got an alcoholic beverage and tried to walk over to that park, is there any convenient way to? Get over there.
Well, just bridge, I mean, which is the, well, the dirt road right here.
Yeah. Um, I I think that the main thing would be just to use the Main Street District, black, just to kind of, for the future, if we need to expand anything, but. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I mean, on that, I mean.
They would change it if we need.
They just. All right.
Oh, yeah. One of the issues you could have going down Spring Street, the sidewalk and all the other parts of the map, things get in the sidewalk, the long road, another problem.
Okay.
Oh, I wasn't asking for a bell spring. All I was saying was, we're drawing that around consumers and it's better. Super perfect.
That's super.
Or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I I I got that.
Okay, good. Moving on, um, under new business, um, we have the appointment with the Main Street E B A Board. Uh, according to main point being free downtown, it's developed according to board recommendations. This point had a major objective of whether it would turn its fire in January two seventh and just take the end of the heart return by January twenty. So this would be informed, um, right, according to by the mayor, with the assignment of the city commission. So uh, in in package, uh, for applications and letters and the area with the three of the base committee. And um, my recommendation, we should approve those uh for. So, yeah, any comments from the public, any questions? Is the manager still there? Should I go? Miss, uh, where?
Oh, no, I didn't hold that.
So essentially, my hold is with the mayor of the ordinance, kind of understanding like what criteria, what? What metrics and what you utilize or how you establish other points essentially, because this is the only board, like parks and rest area to vote it as a recommendation process.
The the two that has the opportunity. Main Street E B A.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, they're involved, this is a good people, they're uh, they bring the things to the community, they raise the effective fresh energy. Uh, I was instructed to answer the questions that I posed to them and I think uh they're a great asset to the Main Street Board. I think in the board of uh, well, not the board of the organization, the laws of the president and director, must be rebuilt or uh. Didn't get on with it and I I think they'll be bringing the perspective to is what I'm true. I have, you know, I have no kind of checkup. I think this is more of a. You know, conversation, got uh.
Okay.
Questions, that's the thing.
Okay. And how many more agencies are on the board?
That's it. That's it right now. There there may be one more, then we're indicated they they possibly may be uh, I'll design it, but there's not an official record on the nation one, as far as I know. Um, I'm. Full support. I didn't take motion with the uh, one is the Main Street E B A Board, so. Second. Any further discussion? Eric, roll over, please.
All right, Moody.
Hi.
Navy, I'm ready.
Hi.
Namja.
Hi.
Shadwell.
Hi.
All right, uh, moving on to item ninety eight, we have three alternative conventions. The air. The first one is that. Yeah, we'll be back in a minute. We said it's a recommendation to the Mayor's Director, Jessica Paul, to approve the poverty tax guidelines for twenty twenty three and compliance with N C L two one one dash seven U as presented.
We have representatives, Jessica isn't here, we have representatives, uh, Joe, Nick and Jason from our assessing team. Uh, provided the initial and the sort of background information that's in your packet uh with regards to this. Uh, this takes place every year. Uh, and they're recommending that we approve the guidelines. With the initial twenty percent for twenty twenty three. So any one of them can address any questions the commission may have.
Okay. Is there anything around that we might need to present?
Oh. I can't. Joe Black, your assessor. Um, so this, again, like I said, this is something that I've done regularly every year. Uh, this has been an exemption that's been. Available to residents that uh are in condition for poverty, an exemption, not a factation. Uh, there was some recent law changes in the last few years. Um, the law changes basically remove any discretion the order review members had to. Uh, they could deviate from the policy if there was some circumstances that were review members found that needed to be addressed. Let's say, for an example, maybe somebody. Uh, became medically ill and quit work, uh, but maybe they were just slightly over the poverty income level. Order review could use that discretion and still grant the exemption. Um, with the law change that that language would remove the deviate from policy, so we're recommending that the. Poverty guidelines be increased by twenty percent and you can see the income levels there. Uh, that way the order review has more flexibility if somebody is just slightly over the poverty income standards. But other than that, this is a requirement that we have to do annually for those property tax statutes, so.
Okay, any questions? Any questions for the audience? I'm in. If not, uh, Tim, you want to start?
Sure, my only question was just basically in, oh, so the sixteen three oh eight is basically the state standard. And so we have the ability to go above that plus twenty percent, whereas the state itself raising that twenty.
No, so the thirteen five ninety is that.
Yeah.
So basically, that's the minimum poverty standards. I mean, sixteen would be our standard. So I mean, what about that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I find, but uh, again, some that's, you know, been done um for for future years and that everybody don't think they're covering. Fans.
Yeah, I'm in full support. I am too, but I didn't know it's any increase in numbers, um, yeah, of family. Meaning, so every year, the federal poverty income standards are published and those increase slightly every year.
You sure? So is it any game general that was well being the market needed and we can take the information. The leaders that struck in the.
Um, that's surely not, that's not something that we do as far as we'll get the demographics, then we just uh use the federal poverty levels. And go from there. And then if somebody meets that criteria, they have the ability to apply to the order review for that, I believe. Um, historically, we've been between one and three people in the community.
Thank you. Mike, did you have something?
No, he he answered the question I thought you were trying to ask.
Yeah, I'm just curious. You said one, one, two, three people typically. What about a hundred percent disabled veterans?
Uh, that's a totally different law that is already in the books. Um, so if somebody is a qualified disabled vet. And they fit this criteria, they can apply directly to the board review and there's no policy that needs to be done at the local level that's already state law.
And their income level does not determine that whatsoever or?
Okay. Now, I would, um.
I made the motion to approve the poverty tax guidelines for twenty twenty three and compliance with N C L two eleven. Dash seven U as presented.
Okay, there's a second. Sorry, time's second. Any further discussion? Okay, Becky, you have a phone call, please?
Angela.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Navy.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you. No. Mike's just gonna juggle. Would you have to uh, Michigan drinking water asset management grant implementation?
Mike? Yes, at our last city commission meeting, the uh city commissioner approved accepting a three hundred and seventy six thousand seven hundred and sixty nine dollars grant. Uh, from the state with regards to our drinking water uh asset management uh program. Um, there is no local match required. This is a hundred percent uh state funded program. Uh, the city applied for this in December twenty twenty, but was just recently approved, this funding. Uh, as mentioned and discussed at our last meeting, this is similar to our the uh asset management program we did for our waste and stormwater systems. Uh, and that's really given us some good information to work with. Uh, with regards to this, the drinking water asset management, uh, our consulting engineer, C two A E, applied for this funding uh back in twenty twenty. And that would have no charge to the city. Uh, we anticipated using their service to help implement the grant uh. Uh, through the approval of the attack proposal for a fee now to exceed one hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, those fees would be paid completely through the grant, so there's no local funding that needs to go into that process. Uh, what we're looking to do today is have the city commissioner approve that agreement, so C two A E, we'll get to work on this process. Uh, we do have Eric Cron from C two A E here again uh to address any questions the commission might have on this matter. And it's our recommendation that the commissioner approve the agreement with C two A E for one hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred dollars to be paid through the grant and authorize myself to execute the agreement.
Okay, just a moment. Eric? Sir, do you want to add?
Uh, I can answer questions if you guys have them. Um, I can get into more detail if you need them, but at this point. Only you guys have questions, but it's.
Well, Tom, you have any question? I'm sorry, did I go to the public again? No. Um, any questions, comments to the audience? Okay, uh, any question? I I just, this is a great opportunity and I just must be. Eric, last. And full support, okay?
Uh, no, I'm in full support.
Why, we uh, we had a presentation on the Michigan drinking water.
Yeah, we talked about it. Too many things I I'm in full support.
I am too, so I would uh enter the motion.
I made a motion to, through the city manager's recommendation. To approve the proposal with the city's consulting engineers, C two A E, for drinking water asset management grant implementation services and the amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and offer as a city to execute the agreement.
Okay. So your second. Report. Second, where do you, you have a question? Call please.
Moody.
Hi.
Navy Hammer.
Hi.
Namja.
Hi.
Angela.
Hi.
Tony Gary.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the E M S full term time, excuse me, full term. With no, consider the recommendation from the E M S Director, Michael Lewis, all right, E M S Department, the mayor's board, open night paramedics. As well.
You were right the first time. It should be timed after. It was automatic. Yeah.
Randy, please.
Yes, so I am requesting that they mention, Michael can allow me to hire our full time paramedics to help. With a hundred percent of the duties that need to be divided out. We currently operate on a hundred percent paid on call. Everybody that works here is volunteered. I have a staff of thirty people. The tenure of the paramedics alone is over two hundred years. Will that in another system? Most of the paramedics that work here have been here ten years plus. In in the current workforce that we live in, there are less and less paramedics being turned out every day in week ends. I included in the memo all the things that's required to making being a paramedic. Um, we now are moving towards a heavy, you can have college degrees that will come out in the next two years. I've earned that Main Circle four year class. We have to relicense every three years personally. We have to maintain advanced cardiac life support, prehospital pediatric life support. We have to maintain a trauma license. We have to achieve home credits. It's forty five in the state of Michigan, ninety if you want to continue to keep your national registry. This is a two year college commitment. Most kids don't, you know, grow up, leave high school and go, I'm gonna go to school to be a paramedic. Um, the proof in this is the median age of the paramedics in Boyne City is fifty five years of age. I am the youngest paramedic that we employ in thirty seven years old. I had my license for six years as a paramedic and I've been in this for fourteen years total. The number gets less and less every year. Six of my staff are retired completely from their full time jobs. The other staff all have other full time jobs. And so the reason that I'm asking for this is our system won't be sustainable for very long. Um, running on a paid on call basis. They can go fly at home, deep learning, fly to other agencies. I have, every other employee I have other than my retired guys, all have other full time jobs. We don't pay precedence and that's okay right now. All have other full time jobs, we don't pay precedence, and that's okay right now. Um, this current month, I'm facing five of my paramedics having. Let me know that they're leaving for vacation, that leaves me to cover thirty open shifts right now by myself. At twelve hours a piece, plus through my administration duties. It's a lot. And so in asking for four full time hires, some of those duties can be divided up. Um, this was previously presented in the budget, and the way it was presented. It presented me working four ten hour shifts, we, we weren't twelve hour shifts, so there would be an eight hour gap, that was the difference. And I did the math on this, I called every other agency in the area and asked them what their low and high pay is, and we averaged it. So this is a big ask, but our future is not sustainable in the way that we sit down. Within five years, at least twenty five percent of my medic staff will be fully recovered. If somebody comes out of the academy and they know that they can get a full time job at one of our neighboring agencies for benefits, they're going to take it. And they have. So this is a stressful, stressful point in our world. But I want to see us all more sustainable.
Mike, anything you want to add? Um, we knew this day was coming, our previous executive or EMS director John Malan has talked to us about that in previous budget sessions. And actually budgeted for this current year's budget for him to retire. Uh, with most of the other departments, I think all of the other departments going to some point of full time staffing. Um, the game has changed, we're the exception in the area that still has the. Basically all except for Brenda herself, on call department. Um, and that's just not what the competition is doing, so we have to change to meet the challenges of today. Uh, I think we've had a really good run and probably longer than most with regards to the system at half. Um, but unfortunately, it's it's time for change, and I think what she is proposing will work out well for us. Brenda's brought some. Uh, significant improvements to the organization of our department already. And I think with her ability to. Uh, basically better direct people that are working for her full time, it's gonna, uh, that's gonna have benefits for us as well too. So I fully endorse this recommendation, even though I would prefer to live in the old world, it's that world just isn't your right mind. It served us well.
Right, anyone in the audience, question kind of?
If I may, I'd like to extend my support for Brenda in this. Um, I watch how she does scared of it. It is painful to watch volunteer scared of it. Uh, if we had to do that, at least part of it would not be here. Uh, what happens is the scared of comes out and the people that already have the jobs. Pick what you shift they'd like to fill in, and Brenda's not feeling the rest of all. Um, that is, she's definitely right, it's not the same way, she's going, especially with everybody else offering better paying benefits. I think it's something needs to happen.
Anyone? All right.
My name is Dan Lawrie, I've paid on call paramedic here for Wind City for approximately eighteen years. I have been in EMS for forty years. So I've got a little bit to say about things. I've worked as a complete volunteer, I've worked paid on call, I have full time work and all this. And you should know that the average career for a paramedic in the United States is only five years. So for me, the last forty is, I don't know what it is, but I consider it a calling and not a job. Uh, with one full time director, basically one incident away from the catastrophe under their current model. Um, to prove my point, early on in my career, I ended up doing CPR, I'm a CPR instructor. He passed away at the age of thirty nine, and I don't wish that on anybody, but. I live in the real world, if something should happen, we pick up the pieces, but being paid on call, we can't do it for very long. With four full time paramedics, we can support our director, we have duties assigned to full time employees. Um, divide the workload up, and if something should happen, whether it's a vacation or an illness, somebody breaks a leg. We'd be able to pick up the pieces, you'd never notice a lot. So basically, I'm just asking the city commission to proactively manage this change, looking ahead. Instead of something happening, then you can react to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Anyone else in the audience? Yeah. I'm sorry.
Sure, a question, so. Four people going from volunteer to full time. Um, at your suggested pay rate, is that a significant increase in pay for that?
So it takes a hundred and ninety two of the pay nine call hours and converts it, yes, it will have an increase in what we pay out. But it was not significant, I didn't have all of the pieces up until today, there were other things that we paid out this year that I not anticipate for. My predecessors are leaving, you know, we had to pay him through July, which wasn't budgeted for. Um, and he's still working paid on call for us, just so you guys know. Um, so yes, it will increase it, as the next memo shows, I'm trying to also increase our revenue. If we have more direct billing, we're going to bring back in more money. Our call volume jumped quite, quite a bit this year, last I checked in our computer, I think for two hundred runs over from last year. So with that coming forward, our community's obviously growing, we're putting a hundred and forty new houses in. Um, and we're not the only community that recovered, that's doing that, so we're promoting. So we have to be able to stand and be ready.
So, um, you said you have thirty staff members. What can we do to keep the other twenty six happy?
So all the other twenty six, so this is only full time paramedics, right now, my E M Ts, some of whom are going to school to be paramedics. I have four that are full time college students doing everything for him, doing the very life program. One almost done, but just beginning, so those are people who will look, you know, into their future. Um, right now, not having so many other things that are undone because we can't manage what we have, we're getting staff and help. You know, we'll have full time education that they can do here in house. You know, we'll have somebody who can control the schedule, I'm one person directing thirty, if there's somebody full time on, they can direct their questions to them, it probably is their response. I'll also be able to anticipate a little better, if somebody's sick, I will be the only person receiving the full call, a full timer can also make a phone call statement, somebody come in today. So those are things that will help manage the overall outlook, how can we keep them happy? Recognize them, that this is a job, it's not a hobby, it's not something we do on our side time. Some of these people work, this is a full time job and work full time jobs and runs. So having recognition is huge for them, this is a big thing.
Thank you, I'm I'm in full support, appreciate all that you do.
Yeah, uh, obviously, I take nothing away from the, uh, all the hard work that EMS goes and the entire department do, so. Uh, I, I. What we have in our packet, I don't know how I'm supposed to vote on this, sorry. Um, the, uh, Tom alluded on to it a little bit, you know, where does it put us? And, and, you know, we did, we did talk about it, you know, going down this year, this is where we're gonna gravitate to, but now we're, we're jumping without any, and zero numbers. And, uh, um, as as someone that, again, tries to, you know, stay physically responsible, I, I don't know how I can do that, I don't know where it was. Shaking, and what that means said, you know, uh. What about, um, you know, is there, is there a happy medium, you know, to start a trial period? Hire one or two full time ones and see how that shake, you know? I just feel like, right now, personally, I'm being put on the spot, and, you know, uh. You, they're the old, okay, so I'll be honest, I'm gonna show my own, I'm having a heart attack because I said it all of this. Uh, the, uh. I, I just, without, I've got nothing, there's no, there's nothing here. Uh, to to tell me where to go, and Tom asked if you, if you sorting issue a little bit, Brenda, and I'm not completely. You know, trying to get, dealing with John's hour and stuff. Uh. I, I think we need to at least table it for now, and I'm not, the rest can do what they want, but I think, I think we gotta cut this out. We gotta figure out, okay, let's get the rest of the numbers, and let's show that this is gonna, wow, this is gonna shake it up. And, you know, those four people, you know, we're here now, and now we're gonna go here, here, you know, and. As far as, as far as dollars up, and I was in full support, uh, that was in December when you're, um, you know. Uh, of you doing, you know, your own, you know, building aspect and everything, taking more control of it. So I think, I think you're gonna get a better picture moving forward, but to just jump from. Zero to four full time employees with nothing, no, no numbers to go on, I can't do. It's funny, but.
Okay, Kim?
Um, I'm in full support, uh. I have sympathy for you, trying to run a mountain here worse. Um. A little funny that we have this as an agenda topic prior to the emergency services fee schedule change, in my opinion. That's my first, that's. Just if I was creating a packet, that would have been a point I would have did there, um, but, um. I, I am in full support, and one way or another, we're gonna find a way to get off from the model that we're in, endorse model like this, I have full faith in that. Because I don't see how we can continuously march forward and be successful with the current model that we have. Um, with that being said, it is difficult for me, it's a sixty four thousand, or sixty five thousand dollar increase times four. Um, and not knowing where we're currently at, where we're going, and looking at the budgeting, the numbers is just something that. There's some metrics here that I would like to see, just to look at our strength. Um, and at the end of the day, if the city manager is putting his stamp on this, and if he, um, supports this. I would like to see follow through and that support through the financial side as well, and making sure that. Um, he is confident in the financial aspect of what this is gonna do to the general fund and for the budget specifically for EMS department. Um, so I am in full support of getting into this model at some point in time. Um. I would just, I, I would like to hear from, um, the city manager. And what comments he can add on the financial side, how he feels with the. The confidence he has with the financial impact, and I guess more so looking at doing different numbers. Um, potentially through the budgeting process, and seeing where we're currently at and where we'll be heading in this model.
Mike, do you want to be talking to that or?
Oh, sure, before, or as Brenda put this memo together and was working on various drafts of it. She went back and reviewed all the numbers and the wages and the salaries and the benefits to come up with this memo. Um, and provide, uh, and, and one of the skills that Brenda has. And has demonstrated, uh, even in the couple of years prior to her assuming this position, has been an ability to do financials. Uh, she's really helped us out with, with working on our billing processes with, uh, some of our neighboring townships, bringing order out of. Out of, bring clarity to that situation where there wasn't it before. Uh, so at the end of the day, my question to her was, okay, after reviewing all these numbers, are we gonna be able to make this work? And she basically said, yes, that this will fit within the financial budget that we have. That at that point, she was anticipating it would be about ten thousand dollars under budget at the end of this fiscal year. So that the numbers that proposed, even though her scheduling scheme and things are a little bit different than what John talked about, and it was included in your budget packet. She's modifying that, but I, I'm fully comfortable and confident that. She's done the research, the document that, uh, the numbers are correct. And when she tells me that those numbers are correct and we should end up in good shape, I take that with a high degree of confidence. So I'm comfortable, and that's why it's before the commission today, and that's why, um. You know, the second or the last line in the, to the fourth paragraph. Uh, of her recommendation on the second page, you know, with an increase to our billing revenue and offsetting material change. Or wage, uh, we project that our billable revenue will increase to enough to offset these changes. So that with her telling me that she thinks by the end of the day, you know, when, when April thirtieth comes, we should be in, in the black. Even after implementing this, uh, maybe confident with bringing it forward to the commission.
What, any other?
Uh, no, I mean, that's where I started that, however, with an increased billing revenue, so you have done those metrics, you have done that analysis with her. Though she presented it to me, she reviewed it with me and came up with the analysis, so. She has a much better in and out with regards to that financial EMS department operation than I do. So you said a ten thousand dollar, uh, did you say ten thousand dollar shortfall, surplus, yes. And that's with little man's payout until through July?
Payout, yeah, so that was what I was missing, but if you took that out of the picture completely, yes, we would have a ten thousand dollars surplus. At this point, and we're working with our billing company again to streamline things. There were some things that were done prior to me that didn't quite make sense, and so we worked on that. Um, right now, I'm calling them almost every day to the Medicare cost accounting, that's where the reschedule came in because. That was overlooked even though it was proposed in the budget and even, so that was a big loss of revenue, so it will gain that again.
So you said with a little man. With that included, we would be at a ten thousand surplus?
Yeah, because I did not have that information in front of me, so I did the math, I had a sheet from me, I did the math with all of that, because I did not realize the true expense of your payout.
Right.
I only had the information I had from your staff.
Right, what would your numbers look like with? That true expense with that payout for July?
So through July of this year, um, if I added that, it would be, so with me as the director. It shows budgeted for six seventy five, four twenty six, and we're currently at six sixty eight, two ninety four, but you add one on into that, that will raise that. I did the mathematics for next year without him in it, with me in it, and estimated that the highest maximum want to pay for work timers. I guess we raise it, but we can also raise our revenue if we're not constantly using money because I can't keep up.
Right.
That's a big part of this.
Right, would you, uh. Could the commission give you three now until the, that expense payout through July and then come back for the fourth? Or is that something with the budgeting process that you would not like to see as a city administrator? It's city administrator, I defer to her for her initial response on that, okay?
The statement is that it will just be more shifts that I have to cover for right now, but if that's what we have to do to move forward, then also for.
Okay.
Yeah. Brenda, I, I can't tell you how much I support what you're doing. But, but I, I do have the same concerns as Marty and him and brought up about this, the finances, making sure we know what we're doing this. This is a big move for the city, a really big move. And just to make sure we all understand, and I was wondering, the budget document, John had it broken out, you know, the whole. Is it possible for you to help me with this for, so we can have it to review and just understand exactly where we are? And any other concern that I have with, with the, with the wages so far this year? It looks like we're, uh, we may be a hundred and some odd thousand dollars over the budget. And then just recently gave an increase to the police department of ten, fifteen percent somewhere near, and if the numbers that you're projecting include that type of increase. John was talking about max paid twenty four, now I think it will be a twenty five, twenty six.
He was looking at a max of twenty five, I did the research and we're looking at a max of twenty four, so I actually lowered that. Um, he had a base between seventeen and twenty one, and the local area is between eighteen and twenty four. And I mean, eighteen is your, so what on your license, and even that, they're paying people more than that. Um, this is scheduled, I can kind of explain, he has it in here that the administrator would work four ten hour shifts. We work the twelve hour shifts on the truck, so that leaves an emptiness of the eight hours, so I couldn't quite figure out how that came out. Um, this model is for three or four twelve hour days one week, three twelve hour days the next. I just took from every other department, Northern Michigan, they all do forty eight hours, that's a very standard in fire EMS. And so that's how I came to my mathematics, so yes, and it states in here. And it states in here that the staffing counter has four hours of built-in overtime per pay period. And that is eight hours a week, if you took the third person out or even put myself into this, it would be the same amount of mathematics. So it makes sense?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of a legal person, sure that I see and put an understanding on what happens if I make a decision. So if we, if we put this all on two weeks, if we just, you know, fine tune, what, what, what position is that for you?
I would most likely lose two paramedics in that period of time.
So to another, so.
Yes, to do other.
So you're deeply backed up against the law.
I am, yes. There is no doubt.
So that's kind of motivating why we're where we are right now. Because you're afraid to lose two, two, four potential, four hundred people.
So before, before when John was here, there were three of us that filled all the roles, and then we did administrative duty, switched cost money. The two others had since left, you take full-time jobs in Jordan Valley EMS, and the other left to take a lot of grandparents. But both have stayed per diem, neither one can work per diem, because they're being so offered so much money and overtime and a full-ten jobs. So I don't get them. I had one medicate notification for five weeks, and I have two other paramedics who have given me notice that they have been offered other types of benefits. So those are realities I face. So I came to with one I have. Prior to me taking over, I did the mathematics, I showed it to Michael Kane. There were a thousand hours paid in office time and administrative assistance time that wouldn't exist anymore, that's twenty-five thousand dollars. That I can see a foresee of savings. Um, I pay somebody currently to take my trucks in for repairs, because I can't just call them up and say, hey, we need to do this. They take them, get them repaired, I can give that to a full-time person. Um, when we have to have people come into cover, we have to pay them for that, that would be covered by full-time staffing. So those are places where I can see an exuberant amount of savings.
So I guess you'd rather do it in that way.
Yes, and I can break this down for you at any point and show it to you, but I have a picture of.
Well, this is just me, it's the thing.
One hundred percent.
Trying to be very, uh, very good steward, that's paid hours, and anyone in like that. Well, are, are EMTs of good minds, are there?
We are having.
Is there a way, I mean, are other departments, they have been, you know?
Um, all I know is one that approached it, and it never came to fruition. I don't know about outside of this company, but I know in this company, there was one that pursued it, but it never came over.
It was, I was sort of concerned and questions I had, um. So how many, how many folks are, you mentioned Belton, are in school or EMT training now, or, like, what, what kind of pool do you have to draw from with this story?
EMT training?
Or the EM?
Or paramedic.
Paramedic, I'm sorry.
So currently on my staff, I have two in paramedic school. I have one who is in the very, very, and we call her, um, school title, which is two years of commitment, and her class actually got extended. I have two on my staff that have completed the training, but they were what we call the open class. Um, they lost a lot during twenty-twenty, so they're going through full-time, um. They're re-educating to retake the test, so they're moving forward towards that, and then I have one who is in his second semester of paramedic training. So he won't even be able to test out and license until the end of the twenty twenty-four. That's how, and the pool of people coming out of school, I hate to say it, but I mean, Dan can come into it, he teaches at the college. How many people would you say come out of the average paramedic class?
Uh, it varies by class, but I'd say probably fifty percent of those that start, they'll finish.
In my class, there were thirteen, and there were only three of us who continued EMS, and only two of us who still work.
Another thought, maybe, so, um, that was all, sure. So to clarify from you, Tim, the, the total was three hundred and thirty-seven, um, of paramedics. Well, also, what about, um. So, okay, backs up against the wall, so what about two, until we get the rest of the numbers?
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I, it just, I, I can't express more what you just said to, I, I. Or without, without having any, any basis, other than I trust you. It's just saying, uh, hey, don't worry, everything will be fine. Or that won't you make that in the way of things, but, um, so, uh, and, or, or.
Okay, is there anything else?
In, in a sense of urgency, in the sense of, I do trust you, we hired our department heads, or their expertise. And, and, um. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from EMS director Brenda Wilson to authorize the EMS department to hire four full-time paramedics, as I'll land low.
Okay, is there a second? Um, can you give me a minute, Marty?
Yeah, I would, I would make one, um. And I really would like to go through the fee schedule change, um, prior to the motion for this. So is there any way we can jump this, and come back to this one after we have the fee schedule?
If you want to open soon.
Because I would, I would give her support, so she just literally told us that she waits two weeks, she's gonna lose one or two, two paramedics. So, um, so I would make a motion to give her two paramedics a day, and to follow up after the budgeting process for the next two paramedics. But I don't, I, it's, to give it to right now without knowing what this commission's gonna do with the fee schedule is kind of bosh. And that's what I said in the beginning, that I, this fee schedule really should be in front of this, this one. And it, I, I can give her, I, I can give a motion to, for two full-time right now, to follow up with the other two after the budgeting, if we pass this fee schedule.
Uh, I don't know, Tom, what would be such a schedule max, and pretty, just reverse needs to.
Yeah.
Right, right, also. Um. How can last month, we approved, oh, hardly, um. Raises for our, our, our partner, police department, and today we're walking, and again, an essential part of the services that the warranty provides. I just, I, I, I trust Brenda, she's the expert. I, I, but I, we want to get that together, discussion party, they're good.
I, I, I fully trust Brenda, and it's beyond, um, deserved. Um, the only issue I have is when we were looking at the structure and the pay and the price increase for the police departments, I had all the financials. It was not in the form of a memo, and it was the department head, the city administrator, walking through the finances with us, walking through. Ten, a ten-year average, walking through the future impact, walking, it, it was a different picture than what I have here.
So if we talk fee schedule now, with that, how situation?
Absolutely, yeah, we will be scheduled, we're scheduled this forward, I'm, I'm making a motion right on this memo right here to give her access to. And then, uh, I mean, that's, that's the best happy middle medium we can get, so we're helping support our department head, um. It's.
Yeah, obviously, I feel that we're not supporting her enough, but, but if the schedule's supported for, right, they, Brenda, you, would you support?
Well, let's get to the fee schedule.
Well, yeah.
Would you mind, uh, machine, um, moving into the.
Not a problem. So, the fee schedule, um, currently, what I was sent this morning and what I pulled out of the book were slightly different, and Mr. Mayor had questioned it. So currently, what our billing company has on record is six hundred and fifty dollars for an ALS one charge, and seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for an ALS two charge. Um, I can go into what breaks this down, but it bore you. About sixty percent of our calls require a paramedic, that's what ALS stands for, so this money comes from the paramedics that have on the chart. The five seventy-five is a BLS call, which is a basic life support call. As you can see in the amount, our billing fee, we said that's spot on for what, you know, they're charging in the state. She sent me an email, which I had printed, and her recommendations are six seventy-five, which raises ALS one charge to twenty-five dollars. Uh, six, or eight twenty-five from seven twenty-five, which is a hundred dollar raise for the ALS two charges, and then fifty cents a mile. Which, that's with the normal standard. Blue Cross and Medicare kind of set the standard for it, and if our billing company is recommending that same amount, then that's what I would go with. They, they are experts in their job. Um, there's also another increase that's coming out that won't affect this overall picture, but it's from Medicare, so we won't take as much contractual loss from them this year. Which they have made me aware of. But they said for us to be competitive with everybody else in the state, these are the recommended. This was done in the prior budget, but it was never submitted to them formally, and so we need to do this going forward, so that we can bring in more revenue. My department has revenue, and if, if the time, we, accuracy, and it's done correctly, and we can build more, we will bring in more revenue, which will support these full-time hires.
Okay, thank you, anyone even, or any questions or comments?
Yeah, no, I, I didn't have any problem with the, uh, these kind of orders, I mean, I, I. Straightforward, and, and Lisa was more there, and the other, that was all I said, so, I don't have a problem with that.
Tim, she's, you know, you're in full support. I'll make a recommendation that the city commission amend the fee schedule to change our current service fees to the rates recommended by MHR Biller.
Is there a second? All right. Any more discussion? Well, well, wait.
Um, but, Louis.
Uh.
You cameras.
I.
I'm a check.
Hi.
Well, she's here.
Thank you, went back to, uh, our, um, full-time personnel discussion. So we, 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 about two, or how many to hire four that time? Uh, there's not a second to that, and I don't, we ever had, we have a second, I mean, so, is there?
I'll make a motion to approve the recognition from the master Brenda Wilson to authorize the EMS department to hire four full-time paramedics, as I'll land low.
Is there a second? Okay.
I'll make a recommendation of the city commission authorize the EMS department to hire two full-time paramedics. And to follow up after the budgeting process, uh, hire two more, the full-time paramedics, and any support?
Okay, there's a second, or. Clear location, and so you're waiting until May first, or second, or the third or fourth, hired? So to have the budget process?
As, as we go through the budgeting process.
Well, that, that will be May first, okay, did I change the terminology there?
Uh, 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 through the budgeting process.
So we're, we're, we're drawn a hole for. Three months of the risk, including two more?
I'm giving her the best that I can do right now, um, four, and obviously it's not going anywhere after two of your moments just failed.
How do you feel about that, Mike?
The time.
It was good for now, and then we go through the budget process, and, uh. We, uh, just get more clarity in the numbers and long range and our relationship of consciousness that we're in.
I'll let her answer the question first, and I had a comment.
So the reason I pursued four is the difference between me and the other two departments in this county, they, one, are operated on village-based money, they are authorities. Two, they only run one full-time ALS truck, I run two full-time ALS trucks. So that requires me to have two paramedics at all times, that's where the number of four came from, so. I will, like I said, I will take what I can get, but currently I'm basing working a hundred and twenty, which would be kind of short in that area.
And let me just clarify, my motion of two now and two after going through the budgeting process. Is to change the model and to get to where you need to be. But doing it on a more round sense of having the numbers in front of us, within the public packet, within the transparency to the public. Where we are doing the correct thing, um. And your, your comments of, we will lose at least two paramedics if this is taken for two weeks, is a determining factor in the motion today, and supporting you. But not, that isn't, this isn't, you're getting to deal with it, it's, you're getting to, until we gather more information, and we can get you the next two.
Great, and that was gonna be my question, uh, is whether, uh, getting that supplemental information or the additional information that's been asked for. Needs to wait through the budget process, or if you was able to, uh. Gather that sooner, whether we have a work session or whether it came back at a time prior to that, would the commission entertain that?
Absolutely, I would, just having the information here, yeah, just having the information here, just as we did with another department recently.
I appreciate that, I think about one, when I think maybe to, to, so, if you measure, can you, yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you, could you read the motion back just a little?
So I have two full-time paramedics now, and two more through the budgeting process.
Change the two more, um, once financials are provided, to support the hiring.
Okay.
And your second, so, can I? And, uh, there you go, please?
Um, I know that.
I.
I.
Louis.
I.
You, yeah, I'm sorry. Going here.
So, we can come to the end of our open session.
Oh, you have your additional item with regards to the, uh, association of mayors.
Hello, I have a waiting gym, I'm looking, sorry. I don't know, I don't wish to, very, very. Uh, I, this was an oversight on my part, and I brought this up, it corresponds to that at our last meeting, and there's just simply, I think, yeah, I think. Participating in, uh, community in two thousand twenty-two, and it's changed, there's a deadline of February first, which is significant. Uh, we're not really taking any, we're just getting the, the R and D, and that, and that. You know, the only thing, we don't have the application that, I believe, that there's a stretch, and the person filling it out. Preferences, population, former government, services offered, et cetera. Is there anything in particular that, uh, would be of interest to you? I was thinking populations, I'm working through thirty-five and forty-five hundred people, a city manager, former government, uh, meaning a, um. Recreation, um, I mean, I'm trying to find, we, we, there are, there are. I'll buy what all of it.
We put, uh, I, I would be minded, yeah, like water, huh?
Yeah, and, and I'm trying to say that. Okay, so, um.
I. And then also, I, if this was an all-inclusive. If, if we did this as an all-inclusive, because, you know, it spells it out here typically, who does attend these, but it is very broad as to who can. Um, so it's not just like one commissioner or one individual.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, we both, it depends on the other, they're like, oh. You know, probably. It can't be one person, right? In the past, it's, it's very difficult, I traveled to Livingston, and I traveled to Danasty, whatever, all commissioners went. And, and then when they came to our town, we gave them a tour of everywhere, uh, lunch, gave all the department heads, the representative. So, it's, it's pretty cool, because we learn how other cities operate, and very beneficial, and, and it's not very costly, I will think of it. Uh, your staff presenting that day, and or lunch, dinner.
Okay, and one, I think we've done it, you have?
Yes.
Um, so I would, uh, is this recorded motion, do you think, or?
I think you have a consent, that's why it'd be one motion.
I, I'm good with, yeah, I'm, I'm going ahead with. Okay. And, now, uh, we've been tech tied on the agenda with the full session request, considering the, what's the city manager? You're going in full session for periodic personnel evaluation of a core officer, and divided into two areas. One by point, you say, A, with the Michigan Full Communities Act of nineteen seventy-three. So, um, I had, as you know, Commissioner Rassner's not here, he was gonna be available at three thirty-nine. I sent an email out, uh, when I learned that, and it was kind of, it means two twelve. Can, are, are commissioners available, if we were to adjourn now, and, um, come back in the. Are our commissioners available? If we were to adjourn now and come back in the session, it will be very special and creepy. Are our commissioners available? If we were to adjourn now and come back in the session, it will be very special and creepy.
Yeah, I had, I had one other commitment. I reached out to him. I haven't called back yet. Um, but I can push it off. I'm not gonna be the only one to hold up. Yeah, I had, I had one other commitment. I reached out to him. I haven't called back yet. Um, but I can push it off. I'm not gonna be the only one to hold up.
Well, I have not confirmed, uh, other George, he said he was gonna be there with three out, not that email confirmation back again. Well, I have not confirmed, uh, other George, he said he was gonna be there with three out, not that email confirmation back again. So. So.
Career recessor five, yeah, you reached out to me right now. Career recessor five, yeah, you reached out to me right now.
We'll do that. So, um, with the research, I hope they won't do. We'll do that. So, um, with the research, I hope they won't do.
If you go in that closet there, we took the equipment that was down the hall.
And we moved it into that closet here so it's closer, so the connections are stronger. We had to patch cut into the cables that go to each of the TVs as well too. So basically we're using all the equipment that we originally had, but Heather just relocated it.
Well, I think we moved that. Moved that we uh. Or back to where we're in the new chamber. Oh, back to work. Let me start over. I mean move that we call a regular meeting of January twenty fourth back to work. There are all. Uh, favor say hi. And we would like welcome Commissioner Lassiter to our meeting that's joining our meeting at fifty nine. And I would entertain a motion and we uh. Moved close up. As I shared, our open meeting and considered to move it in both sessions for security personnel evaluation. Michael P. has provided an MCL one five point two six eight A of the Michigan Open Brief that C A was two sixty seven of nineteen seventy three. So what I'm saying, sorry. Oh, in favor or off will call.
Moody, Camar.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Hi. I'm just.
Hi.
Lester.
Hi. Before we leave this room, I would recommend that you uh. Because we're still in open session at this point. Uh, complete any good as the order and announcements items, because I don't think there's any action item that you will need to take to the co-session.
We should be.
Very, very. I did have the one item I wanted to bring up today, that was at our next meeting on February fourteenth. We have the auditor scheduled to attend that meeting. So I want to make sure that everybody would be available if you wanted to set, as we had for the earlier some time we had scheduled. To come in at like five, five thirty. So we'd have a couple hours where you could meet with them and review the audit documents in greater detail before we go into the regular meeting at seven P M. So would you like us to do that as a group or as individuals? As a group, I think that's more productive that way. I mean, if somebody had some individual issues that they wanted to talk to the auditors about, I'm sure they'd be more than willing to entertain that as well. But you can do that with a phone call or something, but I'm thinking what we've always done is have the commission gather as a work, as a more in-depth work session to go over the financials with the auditors. Uh, prior to the public meeting.
I'm nine five thirty for the meeting. I had to give it about an hour and forty five, fifteen. Okay. Yeah, I hope everybody said nothing. I should go back. I don't care.
I don't know what Georgia's schedule is or anybody else's schedule, how, what early she could do.
As Tuesday, I'll treat some, yeah. Finally.
Yeah, but it's not bothering me. It happened to you, and it was good with everybody else. I would probably recommend that you do five so you're not pushing yourself for time. That can give yourself an opportunity for a break between the two media a little bit.
If you're gonna have five, maybe two or three.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. We're good to go.
Yes.